Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I want to thank each and every one of you for coming to this special call meeting as a public hearing, as we obtain public comments on the advisability of legalizing casino gaming in this city of Portsmouth in the Hampton Roads region. So at this time, Madam Clerk, I'm going to, first of all, ask everyone if you would please stand for the invocation which will be given by Councilman Curtis Edmonds, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Gracious God Almighty, we thank you, Lord, for this day. We thank you how you blessed us through it. We thank you for the season that we celebrate as it is a Merry Christmas and remembering why we celebrate it. We thank you, Lord, for our coming together so that we can see government at work and the democratic process work. We thank you, Lord, for those who are able to come to speak publicly in their concerns and their ups and downs about situations. We thank you, Lord, for concerned folk who come together for their city effort. Now bless us and keep us. Help us, Lord, to be friendly and kind in our hearts and be stern and be focused on what we have to say. Anoint us in this place that we will be pleasing in your sight. We give ourselves to you, God, that you will be pleased. It's in Jesus' name that we pray. Amen.
Amen.
(Inaudible) United States of America and free republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Edmonds. At this time, members of City Council, would you please indicate your presence electronically?
Seven members of City Council are present.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk?
Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. This evening, as you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments. Public Hearing, 13-509, Public Hearing to Obtain Public Comment on the Advisability of Legalizing Casino Gaming in the Hampton Roads Region, Specifically Portsmouth. Our first speaker this evening, Senator L. Luis Lucas. Our next speaker is Mr. Stephen Heretic.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, Neighbors. My name is Stephen Heretic. I live on Park Road here in the city of Portsmouth, and I rise this evening in support of this measure, and I'm here to tell you why. When I had the privilege of sitting on that dais for the past eight years, I saw time and again this city called upon to meet needs that we lacked the resources to touch. I know like everyone here that 55% of our land is non-taxable, leaving the other 45% of us to cover every need that we have in this community. Beginning February 1st, with the imposition of tolls, the burdens that we face together are only going to increase. We haven't gotten any help from Richmond. We haven't gotten any real help from our regional neighbors. We simply can't win as a community, given the way things are. I sat with you for many years, every year, cutting the budget time and time and time again into the bone and into needs we can't afford to cut anymore. We must now rely on our own resources to meet the needs facing us all. We have to think outside the box, and respectfully, I have to urge that we have to think outside this state. Gaming is not a solution to the problems we face as a community, but gaming is a highly regulated industry, among the most highly regulated industries in this nation. For a summer, I was an employee of the gaming industry. I paid for a year of college in three months that I worked at the Sahara in Reno, and I can tell you, to be hired in that industry, you have to be cleared of any criminal conduct, you are screened in ways that you wouldn't imagine, and frankly, to suggest, as some have I've seen in the media, that this type of industry would attract misconduct, shows the naivety that some of our neighbors are bringing to this discussion. Gaming will bring substantial jobs to this community. Gaming will bring substantial income, much-needed revenue to this community. For those of you who haven't seen it, the Hampton Roads Transportation Planning Organization submitted a very comprehensive report on casino gaming in Hampton Roads, and I would urge the members of council and any members of the public that have not seen this to take a look at it. This is as neutral and balanced a compilation as there is. I will tell you that a good many people here, including my family, have visited Las Vegas, Atlantic City. Do we go to gamble necessarily? No. Most of us go for dinner, for shows, for entertainment, and that is what we, as a community, can offer this region. We need the best options we can for the future. I ask this council to, tonight, to vote in favor of this. Send our General Assembly delegation back to Richmond with the power and the authority to ask for what we, as a community, need and what we deserve. Thank you and good holidays.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk?
Our next speaker is Mr. Willett Moody, Sr.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of the Council.
Mr. Moody, we're going to ask you to speak into the microphone, please.
Okay, I'll get over to that. I want to tell you, this is the first time I've had the honor of appearing before you in some time, and I think this is one of the most interesting and worthy causes that I have been associated with. I have, I had the opportunity while I was in the legislature to vote on this legislation, and that was many years ago, before they were able to even get the right to have the type of gambling, if you want to call it now, that we have in Virginia. And it's always been a question in my mind about voting for anything that had to do with gambling. I really don't believe in gambling, but at the same time, I think it's something that people enjoy, that a lot of people in this world, as we all know, that love to gamble as just a, as a, it's an enjoyment for them, it's not something that they feel is wrong, they're not there to do anything wrong. They simply love to play the slots and they'll pay, play a nickel or whatever. And I know my wife, she's the last one in the world to want to gamble. She's never gambles, but when she goes to Las Vegas, she says, "Oh, I want to play that machine over there." And she'll be over there putting a nickel in it, you know, or something, and she'll sit there and sit there and get interested, and she'll spend most of the day. Well, that's great for me because I don't have to worry about shopping with her. So, but anyway, that's just one side of this whole thing. I think the legislative aspects of it are well-known. We know that it's a tough issue in Richmond to deal with, and it's going to be a tough one always. The last one, anything we have now related to anything of that kind has always been very hard to get through. It's in the religion of the Commonwealth of Virginia to a certain extent that we're not going to have it, and a lot of people feel that way, and that's fine, but it's a good thing in so many ways that can help so many people. I go down here to New Orleans every now and then, and I go down to Mississippi on work I'm doing, and I get down there and I see all nice brand-new highways they've built, and they've got the clubs, you know, the casinos all around, and the people look like good, law-abiding people to me that operate those places, just as Steve Heretic said, and I'm glad he has personal experience because that's good that he can pass that on. But I believe that there are great people that work in these places, and they're well-maintained, and it's a great thing for the area. So I hope that, I could say a lot, but the, I am concerned that this, also feel deeply that if any money can be shifted over to help with the tolls, it'll be a great help to this locality and many other localities. So I would hope that that too would be considered as part of the proposition that they're proposing. And I think that's something we need and something that we need that, whatever we can, they're having a hard time finding any money to put into, into these tolls to help the cause, and they are looking, but they're having a hard time finding it, and I think it's going to continue to be difficult, but this could be helpful in that direction. So I have turned in my comments, in writing, and I've turned them in in the form of a speech that I left here today, and I hope you'll have an opportunity to read it. It talks about some of the things that this, we see it as affecting in our city. Our city is, in many ways, is a city that many people love to come to, and many people love to be here, and many people love to see this great area with all the shipping, the shipyards and the ships and all the various things that are here, the historic things in Portsmouth, and they love to come here. This would just be another good thing that would add to that cause, and I think it's the right thing to do, and I certainly hope and I believe that you'll support it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Senator Moody, and sir, it is always good to see you, and thank you for your service. I noticed Senator Lucas has entered the room, so we'll allow you, ma'am, if you want to come up and speak, and as always, it's good to see you.
Another long day in Richmond dealing with Medicaid reforms. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, Members of Council, Mr. Manager, Mr. Attorney, elected appointed officials, community leaders, ladies and gentlemen. First, allow me to wish each of you a very Merry Christmas and a prosperous new year. As you all know, my name is Louise Lucas, and again, I want to publicly say that I feel profound gratitude for the opportunity to serve in the Senate of Virginia, and that I feel profound gratitude for the number of years that they've allowed me to stay there. When I was elected to this body in 1984, and I dare say even when I was elected to the Senate in 1991, internet was not easily accessible to a goodly number of people, but today, we live in a digital age when people can receive all kinds of information if they would only take the time to do the research rather than mindlessly repeating old myths and untruths about things they know nothing about. I come before you at a critical time in the life of our beloved city and this growing region. We find ourselves in the untenable position of facing 58 years of tolls on our tunnels, cutbacks in military spending, struggling to improve our schools and to provide public services to our citizens at reasonable and affordable rates. Our city is in need of an influx of additional revenues, and my question to you is very simple. Will you be forced to raise our real estate taxes, personal property taxes, or come up with some other form of user fees to make ends meet? This revenue would either come from outside sources or our citizens. I can assure you that the state revenue plan will not be sufficient to provide additional revenues. Consequently, it's time for Portsmouth to take a bold move to attract more revenue and to shape our own destiny. Tonight, it is estimated that over $636 million is available in the Mega Million Lottery, and it is available for the rich, for the poor, for blacks, for whites, Hispanic, alikes, makes no difference what your nationality is, it's available to everybody. It's available to believers and non-believers, and in reality, we have learned from state lotteries in other states and casino towns, near and far, that people actually choose gaming as their means of entertainment, and I'm not ashamed to say, I'm one of them. And one of our, if one of our sister cities started riverboat gaming or opened a casino right now, even the toll haters will make the sacrifice to pay the tolls, to go get on a boat, or to go to a casino. If we don't, some other city will do this. The question is, and justifiably so, will Portsmouth miss out on this opportunity to increase its revenues, or just wait for another city to get ahead of us, and we'll stand back and lament, "I should've, could've, wish I," whatever. Rather, we should be bold enough to give others a reason to come to Portsmouth, even to pay the tolls to come to Portsmouth. We need to give people who live in Portsmouth a reason to stay in Portsmouth. We need to give our businesses, who otherwise may just whittle away, an opportunity to grow and to prosper. Now, I realize that there are those who feel like operating a casino is off the radar screen, but my question to any of you is, what better idea are you promoting? Hopefully, with support of this council, casino gaming will become a drawing card. Just think of the different kinds of businesses, jobs, just think of every segment of our community that will benefit. Mr. Mayor and Members of Council, Portsmouth citizens are bent from the bondage of real estate taxes. Portsmouth citizens are bent from the bondage of impending tolls, and it is my hope that working together, we can free ourselves and our citizens of the sick stigma of being Hampton Roads' least-desirable city. I'm prepared to answer any questions you may have, but I want you to know that I have legislation drafted for the 2014 session of the General Assembly and ready to present that legislation, and I would appreciate your endorsement, and I want to thank Councilman Danny Meeks for coming to me and assisting that I file this legislation again.
Thank you very much, Senator, and as I mentioned to Senator Moody, it's always good to see you, and thank you for your service and for always looking out for the people in your district. Mr. Meeks?
Thank you for, Senator Lucas, Mayor. Can you speak about what type of revenue the city might have, what type of jobs it might create, what's possible, buying the tolls down by the years, and also the real estate aspect, bringing that down?
So glad you asked that question. As some of you may know, we have been working on this issue now for the better part of, well, six weeks or more, and I remember when Councilman Meeks called me to ask me if I would do this, we got on the phone with the Quarters Group. I don't know if you've shared that information with others yet or not. We got on the phone with the Quarters Group, and what they said to us is that they are pulling down a million dollars a day at Anna Arunda Mills in Hanover, Maryland, and what they said is, the way you write the legislation is the way the funds are distributed. Based on the formula that we have in our bill, 90% of the revenues will go to the Commonwealth Transportation Lockbox with whatever amount is required to buy down the tolls for the Portsmouth and Midtown tunnels to be completely paid off each year, with 10% of those revenues coming to Portsmouth. Now, Councilman Meeks did a little bit more research than I did because rather than go to two casino developers, he went to a third to get another opinion, and his revenue projections exceeded those of mine. They told me that we, that Portsmouth would stand to benefit $25 to $30 million a year in addition to the money that it's going to take to buy down the tolls, and what I think your casino folks told you is that my number was fairly conservative and that Portsmouth would really stand to gain about $50 million a year in addition to having the tolls bought down each year.
What about the jobs? How many jobs?
Oh, in addition to the jobs, the number for the jobs, I think it was somewhere in the...
1,500.
Yeah, 1,500 jobs from the casino alone, but in addition to that, in addition to the jobs, the casino owners would be required, based on what we ask for, to give us a one-mile radius of perpetual care in terms of beautification for coming in and out of Portsmouth. So anywhere that's one mile from where a casino may be developed, they would have, they would be required for the perpetual beautification for that one-mile stretch. But what we also learned is that with the Quarters Group in particular, they have an extremely great track record for building relationships with small and minority businesses and helping to develop other entities in the community. They working on, was it a Wounded Warriors program, on a homeless program, they were working on adopting a school. Those are the kind of things that these casino folks do because it's in their best interest to safeguard their reputation nationally and internationally.
Thank you very much. Ms. Simmons?
Thank you, Mayor. Senator Lucas, I think you and I both know we've been down a rough road before.
Yes.
You and I especially.
Yes, we have.
And there are those in the community that want to know, why is Senator Lucas going to build a casino, or why is Senator Lucas and Councilman Meeks going to build a casino? Could you address that, please?
Yes, ma'am. I am so glad that question got asked. It wasn't until Councilman Meeks was on the phone with a couple of people, and fortunately, I was on the phone with them, and they were saying, "Well, Louise Lucas is going to get rich from building this casino hotel," and Danny said, "Wait a minute." I'm sorry to call you Danny. Councilman Meeks said, "Wait a minute. Do you all know that these entities are governed by a gaming commission? No one in this room can own a casino or a casino hotel. They are publicly traded entities, and the only way you get any part of it is if you're wealthy enough like Councilman Meeks to be able to buy that much stock."[1297.01][1297.01](Laughter). That's the only way you get any part of it. You have to be to buy stock in it, but casinos are governed by a gaming commission, and that is a part of the bill or the draft legislation that was distributed to each of you. Now, keep in mind that what you received is only the draft, and it stands to be amended several times. And several times meaning, we're going to ask for a lot of things. We're going to ask for beautification for Portsmouth. We're going to ask that they adopt a school. We're going to ask that they create a Wounded Warriors program for us here in this city. We're going to ask that they work with the homeless. We're going to ask that they work with the battered women's shelter. You get what you ask for, but you have to ask for all of that upfront, and it's all factored in. So to answer your question in short, neither Councilman Meeks nor I are going to own this casino.
Thank you. Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Mayor. I heard you say you got to be wealthy. That counts me out.[1353.13][1353.13](Laughter). I get a loan from my colleague. Senator Lucas, a lot of people recall when the lottery was established that the money, I think it was mentioned at that time, the majority of the money would be going to education. Well, we found out a little bit down the road that that wasn't exactly the case when Virginia got into financial problems. We discovered that the governor could dip into that fund for other things, and that was perfectly legal. So I've had some concerns that people say, "Well, if they could do that with a lottery fund, how do we know that this money is going to go to the tolls and for the other things that it's intended for? What kind of protection will the people have for that?"
The protection is where the bill is initially drafted. If the city manager knows, how you originally draft that legislation is how it will stand. When the legislation was drafted, when delegate, then delegate Billy O'Brien wrote the legislation, there was nothing that said that the money was guaranteed to go into education. It was never there. So it was a shell game. That money could be used, however, it was deemed to be used coming out of the general fund. But when I came to you several years ago, and I said to you, when we did those referendums for the one and two cent sales tax so that we could come up with the means of paying for our transportation issues then, that small language said that that money was going to go into the transportation lockbox, and that's where it was going to go. And unless that language is specific, then, and the money goes into the general fund, yes, it can be used, however, the governor deems to use it. But the language specific in this bill says that 90% of the proceeds will go for transportation and specifically to buy down the tolls in Hampton Roads, in particular, the downtown Midtown Tunnel, with 10% going to the city of Portsmouth as the host locality. But another aspect of it that's going to be added is that if any other locality decides that they want to have a casino, and they want to make this a Christmas tree, have at it, because anybody else who builds a casino got to give 2.5% of their revenues to Portsmouth.
terrific. Thank you.
Mr. Cherry?
Thank you, Mayor. Senator Lucas, my colleagues asked out of my question, so I'm just going to thank you for your willingness and always trying to help Portsmouth out. You know, we all ran on jobs and economic development, and now we had, this is an opportunity for us, and as I said to, I think one of the reporters, no pun intended, but we got to play the hand we're dealt. Tolls are upon us now, and we talk about all the time how we're going to fight them and what we're going to do about it, and this is, this is the first thing that's come about that has some, I think, the dollars behind it that we think we would need to combat that. So I just want to thank you for willing to do this. We know it's going to be, it's going to be a tough fight to try to get this through, through your colleagues up there, up in Richmond, but the fact that, you know, that you and Danny Meeks are working on something together.[1540.22][1540.22](Laughter).
That came as quite a surprise to my colleagues in Richmond, too.
Is itself shows that the both of you have Portsmouth at heart, and it's not about you or him or us, but about Portsmouth. So I just want to thank you for that.
Well, I think for most of you up here, you can probably realize that we've all had our differences at some point or another, but in the long run, what we have to do is we have to be the adults in the room and put our differences aside for the better good of the city of Portsmouth, and that's what I've tried to do. Now, I'm telling you, I don't want all of my years in the legislation to be spent and come out and not be able to show something of significance for the people that I've represented for the last, in May, will be 30 years. When I went there, I didn't have all this gray hair, okay? I want to be able to say that I was able to do something to help the citizens of the city of Portsmouth who have been so gracious and have blessed me to be able to represent them for all of these years, and the least I can do is to be able to break the bondage of the exorbitant taxes and the tolls and the other things that are just going to break the backs of this city if we don't come up with some form of revenue. And quite honestly, this is the only thing that I could think of. Nobody else could come up with anything different, and I think when I talked to Councilwoman Simmons one day earlier last week before I went to the hospital, I think it was the same day I went to the hospital, it was December the 9th, was when Speaker Howell was over the HRTPO, and I, when I watched the film, I saw that Mayor Wright was sitting there when Speaker Howell said, and I want to repeat to this audience, "I am sorry." But I was misguided for about 15 years. I thought that there was some way to get revenues out of the general fund to pay for transportation. Back up a minute, yes, we have done some things, but I wanted to say to you that we can no longer take money out of the general fund to pay for transportation. In 2016, we would have $0 in the Commonwealth Transportation Trust Fund to build any new projects, and we're going to barely be able to get by with building any or being able to take care of just our maintenance. And so it was Speaker Howell, Mayor Wright, you were in the room, when he said, "I'm sorry. I made a mistake. I thought we could get the money out of the general fund, but it just isn't there." And Councilwoman Simmons, I called you and let that play back, let it play back so that you can hear it.
Mr. Meeks?
Thank you, Mayor.
One last question. How many, do you know how many states have gaming in it already?
Yes, we're coming up on number 40.
Forty states.
Forty states already have casino gaming, and folks who choose that as their form of entertainment, they're, if they don't have one in their hometown, it doesn't matter. They're going to catch a plane, a train, or drive a Hummer to get there.[1708.01][1708.01](Laughter). And I go at least two or three times a year.
Dr. Edmonds?
It's good to see you well and healthy.
I'm not so healthy, but I'm standing.
A lot of prayer, a lot of prayer went up for you.
I know. Thank you so much.
You've always been an out-of-the-box thinker, and rightly so. You are what some have called a bootstrapper. You pull yourself up by the straps of your boot, and you move on, and you see things that can be, and you always forge a way. And all the good things that have been said about gaming, I'm sure, are a lot of good prose. I guess I hate to be the one to throw in a wrench and just look from a different perspective with the gaming, the social impact of casinos, how it changes people, how it causes those who are poor trying to hit the right machine, trying to get better and end up going bankrupt to some degree and losing everything they've had. There's a group that's sponsored by the Human Services Advocates, that's a nonprofit human service provider that's funded by the city of Columbus, and they were asked to do a community research partner such study on the social impact and the damage that it... damage that it brings to some of the persons who are trying to find their way and end up going down a road that causes other things to happen. And they give some percentages here. And not to go through it, I just was concerned about people using gambling as a resource for their pot of gold at the end of the rainbow, like I see happening with the lotteries. A lot of people have gotten in financial destitute because hoping that they win that mega Lotto that's out there even now. I just have a problem with not you or not what you're presenting, because I know you always have the good of Portsmouth in mind, and you have the good of people in mind. This will probably be passed, and my colleagues will probably vote it to go ahead with it. But I just wanted to bring up the issue of trying to build people up, not just being an attraction city to bring people. And casinos won't eliminate tolls. Tolls will still be there. I don't know of another way, Senator Lucas, I really don't. You come up with a lot better ideas than I would ever come up with, and I embrace all your ideas. But with this particular one, where I stand from in my point of view, I stand on the scruples of that that will demean people and bring people down. It will create a cluster of more crime, more people who are sleeping on park benches because they wasted their funds away. Gambling is an addiction. There are pathological gamblers, there are social gamblers, and everybody has their thing. But if you stick with sipping liquor long enough, you'll become an alcoholic. Or if you keep on smoking weed, you'll become a drug addict. Gambling has that side effect, too, and we have to look at the pros and the cons. And so I'm just throwing out a con here, looking at the impact that casinos will have on the people of the City of Portsmouth who need some help in other areas. And casinos will cause new things to come about. There'll be more people going to services, trying to get some relief from being caught up in the gambling genre. So there are so many other things that I'm concerned about that will change the lifestyle of people in Portsmouth. They will live in the casinos and not live in the homes where they live and try to do other things to change their ways. So I just wanted you to hear that from me.
Bishop, and I do appreciate your point of view and from where you stand. I would expect nothing less from you. I've known Bishop Edmonds since we were just barely out of high school and partway through college, because we grew up in the Norfolk Naval Shipyard together. So I would expect you to take that position, but I might want you to look at some of the data that the Cordage Group has presented, because they would defy everything that you've just said. Crime does not increase anymore. In fact, it decreases by 25%. And in fact, what we found out is that for people who are on welfare, it was decreased by 33%. And in terms of people becoming addicted to gambling, those state and national and international numbers have not changed in years. They remain pretty much the same. And so as we looked at the information and the Cordage Group talked to us, one by one, Elizabeth, they talked to you, Danny, they talked to you, Bill, you, and Paige, you, and what they said to us is that people continue to spread the myths that they hear rather than to rely on the research and empirical data that's available. There would be no more people in Portsmouth sleeping on park benches than there are right now, because the ones who are sleeping on park benches right now don't have any money to go to the casino with in the first place.
I hear you. And I didn't want to come just shooting off the cuff. I got this information, it's online, it's Community Research Partners, and they did a study that involved several cities, Nevada, New Jersey, New Mexico, Pennsylvania, Michigan, and some other places where they've done a study. I just didn't want to come sharing that. And then the profession that I'm in, aside from being a city councilman, warrants that I would stand up against something negative that will pull away from people in their social areas.
And I really respect your position, and I'm hoping by the time we get to the General Assembly and some of those casino groups come to speak to the members of the General Assembly, that they will be able to present them the data that defies all of that. Because you can take the, there's their family, there's a family group association, and all of those numbers look different, because, you know, anytime you do a study, people can make numbers, say anything they want to. You give them to me, and I can do the same thing.
Thank you very much, Senator.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I appreciate your time.
Okay, very good. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Doug.
No, we're done.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Randall, get your mic on.
Senator Lucas.
Go ahead.
I've heard quite a bit about this through the years. I'm a young woman, and I can remember when we first started talking about some way of generating revenue for the City of Portsmouth.
It's been years for the two of us.
That's right. And looking at what can we do, because we are landlocked, and we've even gotten boxed in even more in there. I think that the idea has merit with it. But I think what we need to make sure we're very cautious of, that we work with the people who need their most directions with it frequently, and I'm sure your experience has showed you, just like I've learned with my golden years through my years, that the people who can least afford it are the ones who usually fall in the traps. And these are the ones that we hear and read about in statistics.
I have an answer to that question for you.
Okay.
When we were on the phone with these different casino groups, they were telling us about all of the help programs that they have out there. One is a self-help program, but you can have language written such that you have a way to track people when it appears that they're becoming addicted, so that you can provide the kind of safety net for them, so that they don't fall into the traps that we, you know, that's often spoken of. And so it's not like it used to be. I mean, there are mechanisms now to be able to track. I can tell you, I was sitting in the casino, and I just won $32,000. A man came and said, "Hi, Lily, how are you?" And I jumped out of my seat, because, I mean, not very many people know that my first name's Lily. And so then, all of a sudden, now I have this agent who wants to travel with me everywhere I go, because I just happened to be lucky. I go to the casino, and I win. And as a matter of fact, when these bells and whistles started going off, I told kind of, I said, "I think I won $3,200." He said, "Look at that last zero."[1050.01][1050.01](Laughter). And so, I mean, and I sat there, and I put $16,000 of it back, because that's what I like to do. It's my entertainment. I felt like, wow, I just won their money so I can continue to play. And that's what I did. I stayed seven days.[1066.58][1066.58](Laughter).
That was quite a reward for seven days.
Yes, it was.
Again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Doug Smith, and he's followed by Mr. Steve Carroll.
Mayor Wright, members of council, vice mayor chair, certainly a pleasure to be with you all this evening. Appreciate the opportunity to speak. Again, I'm Doug Smith, 1001 Baldwin Avenue in Norfolk. I'm here tonight to encourage you to pass the resolution that you're considering. I was your Economic Development Director. I've served on the Industrial Development Authority, Portsmouth Port and Industrial Commission, and as a member of that city council. I would argue that I have a pretty firm grasp on the economic challenges of this community. Portsmouth needs an economic game changer. The casino industry located on the downtown waterfront may well represent such a game changer. I urge you to give Portsmouth the opportunity to participate. It's too early in the process to opt out. Too often, Portsmouth has become the hole in the doughnut within this region. Retail services, entertainment opportunities, even certain healthcare services are provided to Portsmouth citizens from facilities located outside our city boundaries, meaning they are paying taxes in other localities. A recent Washington Post, excuse me, in my mind, tonight's resolution and discussion are about making sure that does not happen with the casino industry. A recent Washington Post article read, "Contained in just Nevada and New Jersey a quarter century ago, casinos can be found in various forms in 39 states today. That shows a significant change in social attitudes toward casinos. In other words, more and more states are stepping up to the promise of more jobs and new revenues without new taxes. There will be citizens speaking tonight concerned about the implications of gaming on our society, and that's an appropriate discussion." I would argue that debate should and will be held within the General Assembly among Senator Lucas, Delegate James, Delegate Juano, other members of the Portsmouth delegation and their peers. Tonight's vote is about making sure Portsmouth has the opportunity to participate when the Commonwealth decides to allow casino industry to operate in this state. A no vote tonight does not allow casinos, a yes vote tonight does not allow casinos to operate in Virginia, but a no vote may well determine that they will not operate in Portsmouth. The worst-case scenario in my mind would be to wake up one day in the future and have casinos operating in Norfolk or Chesapeake or Virginia Beach and not in Portsmouth. That same Washington Post article I mentioned referenced a study, and I think Senator Lucas referenced it as well by the Planning District Commission, which said a casino resort could generate $113 million in annual tax revenue and create at least 1,900 jobs. It's too early in the process to say you would not want Portsmouth to host such an economic game changer and participate in that revenue stream. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you all this evening. It's always good to see you. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug, and thanks for your service to the city as well.
I'll speak to him in a minute.
All right, Ms. Randall?
Yes, Mr. Smith. I think this is so interesting, because I can remember a time when this conversation, we had some time back, and we found that we were defeated in even bringing it forward. I think we were at a different point in time now, because we were able to discuss it openly. But we had a golden opportunity, and it slapped us in the face before with some things that were going on on the waterfront. I think we need to make sure we do our homework well, look at the stats, look at the population that we are dealing with, and explore to the point where the city and the residents could probably see what the pros and the cons are, and they can make their decisions. But we are locked in a position where if we don't come up with some creative way for revenue for the city, we can forget it. We have nowhere to expand, and we need to recognize that fact. And we are not bringing in any major industries, our businesses in the city, because we have nowhere to spread out with. So I think we need to look at all ramifications with it and let the people understand the merits of what will happen if we do and the consequences if we don't follow through with some things. That's going to be the educational piece that we need to make sure that our citizens understand.
I agree with you. Think back to, the last real economic game changer for us was APM terminals.
That's right.
And six or seven million dollars a year that comes in. And if you think about it, there was a time when the state was looking to take or did take over operation, and the council at the time put a lot of energy, and frankly, Councilman Heretic at the time, a lot of energy in talking to the state and making sure that facility stayed on the tax rules. And I would say to those folks here and people in the community, don't sell the council short on the ability to shape what's going to come in here. And again, to me, it's about giving yourselves and this community the opportunity to have this come.
Thank you.
Mr. Meeks?
Thank you, Mayor. How you doing, Mr. Smith? In your professional opinion, would this make the city have a destination? Would this be a destination for the city?
I think it has that opportunity. It absolutely does. Imagine, I mean, let's be candid. You've got a civic center complex on the waterfront that you can't afford to tear down. You know, imagine not only being able to afford to tear it down, but to put something up there that's world-class and attracts people here and gives them a reason to leave the oceanfront and come to Virginia Beach, I mean, come from Virginia Beach for an evening. Absolutely think it makes it a destination.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Mr. Steve Carroll, and he's followed by Ms. Betty Ashbery.
Good evening, members of council. Steve Carroll, 3112 River Edge Drive. I came across an interesting anonymous quote on the internet the other night. Facts do not cease to exist because they're ignored. The truth does not cease to exist because it's covered up. I, too, have a Washington Post report. It's going to you now, quite a bit different from the one that you've heard so far. I've heard a lot of clever spin on casinos. Let's look at the other side of the coin. This is a University of Maryland study. Auto theft, larceny, and bankruptcy increased 10% in communities allowed to gamble. University of Georgia and Illinois study. 8% of crime in counties with casinos is attributed to their presence. Mississippi study. Bankruptcies increase. National Gambling Impact Study Commission. Having a casino within 50 miles of an individual doubles one's likelihood of becoming a problem Another study, Canada, two others in the United States. Gambling industry revenue comes from addicts, 52%. One in Canada, 35%. You shut down one establishment in this city because of the prostitution, the shootings, the crime, the bloodletting, the alcoholism, the drunks, the DUIs. How many times did you get reports from venues like The Mansion, Big Daddy's, Magic City? I've been on ride-alongs, members of council, I've seen it firsthand, and you can't cover that up. Politicians who are responsible for giving us the tolls, past members of council, present members of council, state representatives, or politicians, they're like cats in a sandbox. They kick the sand around to try to cover up the mess they made. Senator Lucas sponsored the very bill, co-sponsored the very bill, the Public-Private Transportation Act, that allowed a governor to do the stupid thing that was done with ERC. And yet she points an accusing finger at those and doesn't set responsibility for her own legislative ineptness. Yes, are there alternatives? I can't come to you tonight and give you an alternative, but I darn sure ain't going to stick my finger in the toaster to get the toast stuck in it out. This is insane. And if you fail to regulate places like Big Daddy's and Magic City and The Mansion, how are you going to regulate a casino? Yes, casinos are regulated by the state, but the hotels built by them aren't, are they? Are they, Mrs. Lucas? Now, if you're willing to follow the Lucas political ambitions down the toilet, that's your business. I'm not. This is insane, members of council. And are you prepared to compete with Virginia Beach when they built a casino like Atlantis and Nassau? I've been there, I've seen it. Are you going to lower the standards just so you can keep the money coming in? What's your exit strategy when you wake up the next morning and say, "Oh, my goodness, what have we done?" You haven't thought this through, have you? All you see is dollar signs. You better start thinking. If you dance around a hole long enough, eventually you'll fall in. Correct?
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Betty Ashbery, she's followed by Ms. Pat Simms.
My name is Betty Ashbery, and I reside in the Churchland section of Portsmouth. And before I get started, I'd just like to wish all of y'all a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you. Same to you.
I don't have any statistics to give you all tonight about gambling. I just go back a long, long way. And I've all told you what my age is, so I go back further than any of y'all sitting up there. But I remember the concerns that a lot of the citizens had over the same thing when alcohol was allowed to be sold by the drink. I don't see any more people intoxicated on the streets today than I saw before. So we can stand here and we can make all these judgments about what it's going to bring to us, but I'd rather think about the good things it might bring to us. I have seen this city when it was a thriving place, when you couldn't walk down High Street without seeing everybody you knew. I've seen it when you would walk down High Street and you never saw a soul that you knew. And I'm afraid that's what's going to happen to our city as soon as these tolls go into effect. I don't want to see my city die. You know, I've been to Atlantic City one time, probably will never go back again. And if this casino was built in my backyard, I may not go to it. But that doesn't mean that a person shouldn't have a right to go if that's what they want to do. And when I went to Atlantic City, I allowed myself what I thought I would spend if I went to a, for a good dinner, to a movie, and to buy a bag of popcorn and a drink when you go to a movie. You think about it. You've spent... You think about it, you've spent almost $50 if you do that in one night. I don't know how a lot of people feel about it, but Senator Lucas, thank you for coming up of any kind of solution that may give us the city some relief from our taxes and from the tremendous toll that's going to do a great deal of damage to our city. The other thing is, if the lottery is not already gambling here, what is it? We've got a racetrack on the other side of Williamsburg that's gambling. You can see people that really want to gamble. If somebody's cutting down a tree, they're going to bet which way that tree is going to fall. And the other thing is, I'm a big horse fan, and one thing that's always bothered me, as I told you, Bill, Secretariat was born in the state of Virginia, and we had some of the finest thoroughbred horses in the state of Virginia that could never race here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Pat Simons is followed by Mr. Warren Kaufman.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council members. Pat Simons, Mimosa Cove. Good evening and Merry Christmas to each of you. Last year, Senator Lucas promised that gambling would allow Portsmouth to lower its property tax rate. And this year, she claims it will allow Portsmouth to cut the tolls, which begin in February. So I heard her say, I believe it was 10% of the state's profits are going to go towards mitigating the tolls, but I didn't hear one word about what's going to go to the property tax rate. And that's a big concern for each and every one of us. So why isn't that part of this legislation? We've kind of switched games here because the tolls right now are the big issue, so let's concentrate on that. The tolls are a concern to the people, so we're going to get them to jump on board because it's all about tolls. The heck with the real estate tax. Kind of reminded me of the lottery and how it was designated for education. Well, we all know from what's happened the past year here in Portsmouth, how quick and how fast that taught our school board and our administrators to lie and cheat, don't we? I mean, that's come up even again in the past weeks. Every time I turn around, you guys are trying to get money back from them that they don't want to give. It's really, in reality, gambling will do nothing more than heap up on the back of this already burdened city, an industry that takes a horrifying toll on the host city. Now, I heard Senator Lucas refer to the, how we have this terrible reputation as being the disadvantaged city, and we do. I know, I've been trying to sell a home here for a year, and I still can't get somebody in here to buy it. And then we heard from Mr. Heretic how to work at a casino, you have to have a perfect history and no crime, got to have a perfect background check and everything. And Mr. Meeks, maybe it's going to create 1,500 jobs, but how many Portsmouth citizens do you think are going to be able to work there? I think you're better off targeting some decent industry. Certainly, there are something you can get in here other than a casino. And to tie it in with economic disadvantage, that, it doesn't, how do you relate the cost, offsetting the cost, that it's, the ways it's going to affect this city? Casinos affect our health, our economics, our politics, our ideas and our social values. Slot machines are sophisticated computers that are manipulated to separate gamblers from their money. People within 10 miles of a casino are twice as likely to have a gambling problem. Casinos do serious damage to communities. They lower property values. Now, what's that going to give me? A higher real estate tax rate again when my property value goes down? It's, I've already lost half my property value in the last three years because of this being such a disadvantaged city. Casinos weaken nearby businesses, and that's a known fact. You can look that up online and get details on that. And they redistribute wealth from the poor to the rich. We already have the lowest per capita income, one of the highest poverty rates, and the highest real estate tax. The tolls are going to change this city for generations to come. The terrible social cost of gambling make those tolls look harmless. And I'd ask everybody that's against gambling to please stand. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Cherry?
Thank you, Mayor. You don't have to come back. I just want to clarify a couple of things that you said. You talked about the monies going towards the tax rate. What Senator Lucas said was 90% of the money would go to the state to mitigate the tolls. 10% of the money would come back to the city of Portsmouth. It would be up to this body to take that 10% and use it to lower the property tax rate if we so chose to do that, and any other yields in the city that we wanted to take care of. And those of us who are in support have had those conversations about doing just that.
Ms. Simmons?
Just a second.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
And following Mr. Kaufman is Reverend Charles Kelly.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, Members of Council, thank you for giving us each the opportunity to speak tonight, and Merry Christmas to you. My name is Warren Kaufman. I have a residence at 111 High Street in Crawford Square, and I'm opposed to the casino in the city of Portsmouth. I'll give you a little background. My wife was born in Portsmouth. She's a Scots Creeker. We go to church and actually renewed our marriage vows in Portsmouth. We frequent all the restaurants in Portsmouth more than anywhere else in Hampton Roads. We go to the movies exclusively in Portsmouth. We do have a residence in the city of Chesapeake, but because of our love for the city, we bought this condo at 111 High Street so we could stay in the city overnight to entertain friends and family in Portsmouth. And those people have compared downtown Portsmouth and Old Town to Williamsburg very favorably. We've had a lot of favorable comments from everybody that comes to Portsmouth. We promote this city and we love this city. I believe the idea of having a casino anywhere in Portsmouth is a bad idea for the city and for the people who live, work, study, and play in Portsmouth. Studies I have reviewed, just like Mr. Edmonds', indicate that there certainly will be gains and losses by having a casino, but one question to consider is who will be impacted by the gains and who will be impacted by the losses. What kind of casino town would we be? We certainly can't be Las Vegas. So we're going to be probably a convenience casino, and that's where I start on some of these issues that I've found in my research. Most communities that brought in a casino will be dealing with a situation of convenience where local people will be coming from the surrounding area. That's Casino Watch, February 7, 2008. Studies I've read show there will be a significant negative impact on traffic, police requirements, and social services, and a loss of existing businesses. The reason for that is most local businesses surrounding a casino close in a few years, according to these studies, after a casino opens because of the competition. Free buffets, liquors flowing, they don't have a chance. I believe our city will be forever changed by a casino. This is my opinion. I believe High Street will look completely different in a few years after a casino opens. Instead of the charm of our local restaurants and stores, High Street will be dominated by paycheck and title loan companies. And I echo the statement of the previous person that talked, although I find when I walk down High Street, I see a lot of people right now. They're out there. I think High Street is thriving and beautiful. I do not think an economic advantage, if there is any, would offset the changes that we would be faced with. My research, the research that I did on economics, statistic state that from 35% to 87% of the profits earned by a casino are taken out of the local economy and sent out of state in the form of vendor contracts, capital investment dividends, and parent company profit sharing. That's again from Casino Watch, February 7, 2008. The number of restaurants, bars, and shops in the areas around casinos declined. Atlantic City's 242 restaurants and bars in 1977, before the casinos opened, were down to 142 by 1996. That's Community Research Partners, that's the same, no, that's not the same one you looked at. "In a convenience gambling economy, discretionary spending by locals is diverted from other forms of entertainment, and restaurants, hotels, and other competing local businesses, which lose revenue, will lose revenue and fail." That's by Professor John Kent of the University of Illinois's Michigan State, DCL Law Review of 2003. "The National Gambling Impact Study Commission. When looking to the economic impact of a casino in your communities, it's important to understand a few key concepts. A casino would cannibalize a local economy and result in a net loss of jobs, not a net gain." University of Illinois Commerce Professional John Kent also states, "For every dollar of taxes gained from a casino, taxpayers spend three on infrastructure, problem gamblers, and police. Be sure to include such items as fraud, theft, bad loans, bad checks, lost work time, unemployment, and welfare benefits, insured or publicly supported medical costs, and criminal justice system costs when considering bringing a casino to your community. Economic impacts of gambling." In closing, I have a few questions for your consideration.
Sir, your time's up.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Meeks?
Thank you, Mayor. If I could ask Senator Lucas one question?
No, no, sir, no. Miss, move on. Next speaker.
Reverend Charles Kelly is followed by Mr. Leslie French.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of the Council, and my fellow citizens of Portsmouth, Virginia. My name is Charles Kelly. I live in Churchland. As I've shared before this assembly, I was not born in Portsmouth. I didn't grow up here. But this city is now my home, and I'm here tonight because I care about my home and I'm concerned about the future of my home. I understand if my information is correct, that the majority of our city councils supports this endeavor, but before the seven of you cast a vote, it'll impact around 96,000 people. I'd like to share a few things with you that concern me. We've heard a lot about numbers tonight. Here's a few more. The results of a poll on a website called Debate.org has shown that 65% of those polled believe that gambling is a detriment to their society for several reasons. I don't have time to go into the multitude of figures, but I have done some research, and I wanted to share some information with you. According to Gamblers Anonymous, there are at least 12 million compulsive gamblers in our country. That being the case, it would not seem logical for a state to support or promote legalized gambling. Many of those affected by this addiction fall into it before the age of 41. Gamblers tend to incur significant and devastating economic costs to themselves, which are often passed on to society. Debtors in some cases have exceeded $80,000, resulted in family neglect, defaults on financial responsibilities, bankruptcy, and even suicide. Many studies have shown that legalized gambling has adverse effects, suppressing rather than building up an economy. In addition, a study in 1990 showed that some $73 billion more a year is wagered on gambling than is spent on elementary and secondary education. In addition, I grew up on the Mississippi Gulf Coast, and I know firsthand the potential negative impact of bringing legalized gambling to an area. There was a research project conducted by the U.S. Department of Justice that analyzed crime rates before and after the introduction of gambling into several areas, including Sioux City, Iowa, Biloxi, Mississippi, Prowie, Illinois, St. Louis City, and Alton, Illinois. The revelations of these studies should be a concern to anyone. In every area studied, as a result of the introduction of legalized gambling, the pattern is similar. Crimes such as larceny, assault, fraud, prostitution, robbery, and drug offenses all increased, along with other criminal violations. And all there were some 12.5% to 54.5% increase, percent increase in crime rates. Reports released in 1981 and '83 on the crime rates in Atlantic City, New Jersey, show that the crime rates increased significantly following the introduction of legalized gambling in 1978. What about Portsmouth? Statistics released at the end of October this year show the crime rate in our city is up 12.5%. Much of that percentage is tied to crimes that has been linked to the legalization of gambling in an area. The Portsmouth Police Department works very hard to protect and serve the citizens of our city, but the potential increase in crime rates would add a significant burden to a dedicated law enforcement agency. Traffic problems, if you think they're bad now, they're going to get worse. Family problems. Gambling addictions cause family neglect, abuse, bills go unpaid, rent goes unpaid, needs go neglected, divorce rates increase. Where does it stop? I feel the last thing Portsmouth needs is legalized gambling, and I implore you for the good of our city to vote against it. Remember, a casino wins if its customers lose. I didn't come here tonight to preach a sermon, and I'm not going to. But in consideration of some of the concerns which I've shared tonight, I recall some words spoken many years ago by a man who I've always been able to trust in and rely on, words which I'd like to leave with you, our elected leaders. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Thank you for your time, and good night.
Thank you, Pastor.
Our next speaker is Mr. Leslie French, and he's followed by Mr. Charles Greenhood.
Mayor Wright, Vice Mayor Cherry, Members of Council, Mr. City Manager, Mr. City Attorney, Ms. White. My name is Leslie R. French III. I live at 208 Glasgow Street, and I'm here representing myself. This is a very big issue. I've always held Senator Lucas in high regard. I still hold her in high regard. I'm just not in agreement on what she's encouraging you to do. I think in the long run, it will be a disaster. The last thing Portsmouth needs is the appearance of even wanting to do something like this. What do you want to be remembered for when you make that vote tonight? How do you want to? If I voted for you before and you vote for this, I have to question whether I ever want to vote for you again. I'm not saying that. I'm just giving you information. That's the way I truly feel about this. It's not a good thing. And I know that's very nebulous, but that's just how I feel.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Charles Greenhood, and he's followed by Mr. Vernon Crump, Jr.
Good evening, Council members, Mayor.
Hey, sir.
It's nice to be here again in front of you. However, looks like we're not necessarily at an impasse about this issue. However, there are certain issues that are absolutely looking towards our future as devastating to our city, and that's trying to raise funds to pay for certain things, for our state, with the impending tunnel tolls, if we're not successful in overturning the case in Richmond. We're looking at a future where Portsmouth will be financially hooked for a long, long time. And if this is not a perfect storm, it's not a perfect situation, this is, happens, it actually happens to be something that would give us a natural leg up with income to our community. And casino gaming is not necessarily the end-all and be-all of solutions. However, if you're looking for economic paradise, I don't think you can look much further than trying to get tourists back in our city. If the situation unfolds that casino gaming is actually what people imagine to be, like Boardwalk Empire, or the movies you've seen in the past, and the blight image of Atlantic City back in the days of the films that were created to make gambling look like a horrible thing, people are responsible for themselves. People leave our city every week by the thousands on buses to go up to Dover, Delaware, to Arundel, Maryland, and they go, they play bingo all the time. Arundel, Maryland, and they go, they play bingo all the time. The lottery has caused more of an, an issue that's just been swept on the carpet. This issue with, with casino gaming happens to be a solution to our financial and fiscal problems here. I don't think it's perfect. However, it's not what this, this age-old concept of gambling is. My father was a gambler. He used to travel out to Las Vegas, and casinos would send an airplane for him, and he'd go out there. He lost money, he won money. But it was, it was the ilk of the gambler that they'll go wherever they want to go to gamble. Let's keep them here in our state. Let's keep them in Portsmouth. They're leaving church parking lots every weekend, busloads.
Thank you.
We have definite, we have definite views that may be different, but buses leave all over Hampton Roads going to gambling casinos in other states. Let's keep that money here. If people have problems with, with, with the lottery, what are we doing about that? If people have problems with alcoholism, what are we doing about that? They need help. If gambling is such a big horrible thing on the horizon, someday it's going to be here. I just hope it's sooner than later, because our city needs the financial underpinnings of support. We need to have some kind of financial goal. And the problem that I see is, is quite frankly eminent. Tolls begin in February. Where are the resources going to come from? People are going to be paying tolls. Our, our commuters, if they don't have EZ Pass, they're going to be paying $10.04 round trip for that tunnel. We have no access to any other reasonable alternatives to go around that tunnel, or to go around any of the tunnels that are going to be told. Gambling, gaming, whatever you want to call it, is an alternative, is a pretty good alternative in getting income back into our city, funneling jobs into our city, and funneling success back in our community. There have been lots of reports to the negative, there have been lots of reports to the positive that, that crime has lessened in certain communities. There's a, casinos in Connecticut that in 2012 wrote, wrote, there was an article written that the crime, that the crime in that area of Connecticut was less after the casinos were open for quite some time. I don't have a picture into the future, but I do have a picture of gambling, gambling. But I do have a picture in the future of the financial stability of our city and our commonwealth. It's going to happen sooner or later. Might as well happen now, might as well happen in Portsmouth. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Good night. Dr. Edmonds?
Well, Mayor, I was going to say something about the buses that he saw leaving churches. But you better watch out, bro.
Mr. Meeks?
Mr. Greenhood?
I got a question as a business owner in the city of Portsmouth. As far as the casino restaurants competing with your business, how do you feel?
Well, quite frankly...
You had to come.
Thank you for the question. Quite frankly, I'm not concerned. I think that we, I think that it's been talked about, that it can be written into the regulations, that any casino, getting the permit or the license, will have to, you know, focus attention on their food service and, you know, to be competitive with the local community. If they come in, you know, like other communities and sell a $10 Sunday brunch, you know, it's going to hurt. But I think that, that can be written into the, the agreement with a casino that's successful winner in this situation.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Crump, how are you doing, sir?
Fine, sir.
All right. Welcome.
Good evening. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council persons, administrators. My name is Vern C. Crump, and I'd like to say that our city, our, our city for years has had, have had bingo games three nights a week and other places to play the lottery on just about every street corner store. A great number of our citizens gamble playing the lottery twice a day. This amount of gambling creates addictive and dysfunctional behavior within our communities. The behavior accentuates the poverty and homelessness within our city. Consequently, we do not, I repeat, we do not need this additional council that casinos would add to our city. I remember when the politicians during the Wilder administration wanted us to approve the state lottery. They told us that it would solve the school problem throughout, throughout the state. Years later, we know that was a joke. We don't, we don't want to go down that road again. The revenues from the casino would bring down the cost of the tolls, so they say. In my opinion, this will not happen. Recent studies have shown that casinos give very little back to the community in, in revenue. Casinos are owned by people such as Donald Trump and Shelton Addison. They use their profits to finance the campaigns of politicians like, like Bob McDonnell. We all know that he is the one that put the tolls on the tunnels in the first place. Our best hope now to redress with these, these tolls is, number one, the petition that has been filed with the Virginia State Supreme Court for rehearing the case against the tolls, and, number two, whatever our new governor, Terry McAfee, can come up with to mitigate the travesty of these blank, blank tolls. Until then, let's just forget these, let's just forget these casinos. Let's just forget these casinos, as far as I'm concerned. I just feel that casinos, at this point in time, they just bring too much, they'll bring too many problems as far as our citizens are concerned. As the Reverend says, it does create problems. I don't care what anyone else says. I've seen too much gamblers. I've seen too many gamblers, and the, the problem that it causes in my community, as far as my citizens are concerned, people that don't, that are not able to pay the rent, their children are not able to go to school, they're not able to, to, to have decent food and decent clothes to wear, these kind of things I've seen all, all my life as far as gambling, when they were gambling in the fields, playing, playing the dice and so forth and so on. And, and these kind of things I've seen all my life. I know what gambling does, and I don't need no study to tell me. So, as far as I'm concerned, we don't need casinos. I don't care how much money you make. I think we can find some other means of making money, some other means of bringing, bringing money to the city of Portsmouth. And I do not, I do not think that you're going to be able to do anything with these tolls. What you should have done was voted against Bob McDonnell when he ran. That's what you should have done, as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you, Mr. Crump, very much.
Mr. Brian McDonnell? Brian McDonnell?
Okay.
Uh, okay. Ms. Donna Si. She's followed by Ms. Alvara Johnson.
Good evening. My name is Donna Si. I live in the Woodbine Farm section of Churchland. Principle of Liberty 26, "The core unit which determines the strength of any society is a family. Therefore, the government should foster and protect its integrity." How is legalizing gambling going to foster and protect the family's integrity here in Portsmouth when we have so much governmental interventions in our everyday lives? One of the four situations where governmental intervention is legitimate, to, to prevent debauchery by exploitation of the vices to the detriment of the community, gambling, drugs, liquor, prostitution, and pornography. On debauchery, there are those who feel that they, there shouldn't be any restrictions on the vices of gambling, drugs, liquor, prostitution, and pornography. Many people claim that they should be allowed to indulge in them if they wish. Private vices happen to fall into the category of private morals. Our private morals come from divine commands of right and wrong, which must be controlled by the individual and his conscience. The issue of public morals involving vices is another matter. In a Republican system, the majority of the people in a community have the right to protect the quality of life which they consider to be in the best public interest. This means that no individual has the right to sell, distribute, or promote any products or activities which are prohibited by the rule of the majority. Government has no business snooping into the private morality of the people, debauched though it may be. But the moment there is a complaint that someone is promoting debauchery or adversely affecting someone in the community, it is a matter of public morality. The community has the right to intervene. The vices are a great temptation to a certain type of adventurous enter, enterpriser, because debauchery nearly always brings in enormous profits. The enterprisers are self-motivated, highly adventurous, self-confident, and aggressive people who are known as entrepreneurs. They have the capacity to see opportunities to improve conditions and make money doing it, while others do not. However, in every age and every country, the enterpriser tends to form into a fraternity of sorts, which is often referred to as the establishment or the power people. These are the relatively few wealthy families who have accumulated lands, factories, transportation, communications, and banks, and eventually acquire tremendous amount of influence on every level of society. The founding fathers recognized in the fraternity of enterprisers two tendencies which needed to be guarded against when the Constitution was written. One tendency of the enterprisers is to get greedy and try to take over a whole sector of the economy by eliminating, eliminating all of their competition. Another tendency of the enterprisers is to attempt the infiltration over every level of government and gradually use the powers of government to impose their will on the people and the economy to their own advantage. The founding fathers recognized these dangers and hoped to devise a constitutional structure which would be the means of keeping these tendencies under control. They wanted the government to remain in the hands of the people. Adam Smith wanted people to realize that true wealth is not in accumulation of silver and gold, but the development of farms, factories, homes, plentiful clothes, cheap fuel, good streets, good schools, hospitals, efficient transportation, and universal access to various types of communication. We have so much government intervention with a senator who is supposed to be representing the citizens of Portsmouth. She voted to implement the Public-Private Partnership Transportation Act. She voted to impose tolls on the taxpayer and citizen that she represents. She voted for the state sales tax increase. She has accumulated wealth on the backs of the Portsmouth taxpayer and citizens to build herself two assisted living businesses, a professional building, and a transportation building. Her plan now is to build a hotel with the casino located near the campus. Portsmouth has the highest real estate tax rate in the area. Recently, a sales tax increase and now have to pay a toll to travel the roads. Portsmouth Redevalving Housing Authority has taken over the housing market, providing for 3,000 family places to live, who are below the federal poverty level. There are over 250 homeless people on the streets of Portsmouth. Unemployment rate, 37.9. Population of 62 years and older, 30%. The number of people living under the umbrella of government equals 68% of the population. This leaves 32% of the people who are able-bodied to bear the weight of the multitude, instead of the 68% bearing the weight of the 32. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Si. Mr. Meeks?
Ms. Si.
Yeah?
I have a question for you. Can you come back to the podium? Do you believe with the tolls coming, you think we're going to lose our population? Do you think any of our population is going to shrink?
Yes.
You think that will have a cause of us having to raise our real estate tax again if our population dwindles?
I don't know what y'all are going to do about taxes.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Madam Clerk, Ms. Johnson?
Good evening, Mayor Wright.
Ms. Johnson.
Vice Mayor Cherry, and all council members, Mr. Rowe, Mr. Wilson, and the citizens of Portsmouth. I don't have any statistics. I have my feelings. We agree to disagree. I believe that due to the lack of funds coming to Portsmouth, we need an outlet. We need somewhere for this money to be generated. I don't have an idea where. I like the idea of the casino, simply because I see so many buses leaving here every single day. It's not just on the weekends. It's every single day of the week. There are buses going to Maryland, West Virginia, Connecticut, Delaware, you name it. They're going. And they are getting all of our money, because the majority of the people that are going are us, right here in Portsmouth. And as I said, I, I tried to remember the year that you had the referendum on the, where we vote, when you was asking the citizens to raise the taxes by one cent. I remember that. And a lot of people, I think, didn't understand the wording of it or whatever, but I seriously believe that had they voted to raise our taxes by that one cent, we wouldn't have this problem with the tunnels today. That's my belief, because that's the way I read it. All we needed was one penny. One penny would have saved us this aggravation of these tolls coming back on us. That's ridiculous. So I suggest the next time you write a referendum, write it so people can understand what you're saying and didn't mean it. Because a lot of people just did not understand that referendum. And that's the sad part about it. Another sad thing is, they didn't ask. What did it mean? Well, I did. And that's how I found out what was going on. So I started coming down here, and I give you grief sometimes, and then sometimes I give you praises. But the blame don't fall just on council, it falls on us, the citizens of Portsmouth. See, everybody here is at fault. There's no one person at fault. So you can't get mad with this one or that one or whatever. Oh, I got my differences against a whole bunch of you. Trust me, I do. But right now, where are we going to get that money so that my taxes won't go up not one cent, but 20 cents? When was the last time you heard anybody say, "Hey, y'all, let's go to Portsmouth so we can go to the sports hall of fame"? I'm, I'm just curious. I have relatives that come here, and the first thing they say to me was, "Come on, cuz, take me down to the beach." I go to Virginia Beach, I refuse to buy gas, because I believe my dollars are supposed to be spent right here where I live. But if I got to keep right on paying these high taxes, and if I got to catch this $30 bus to go to Harrington, yeah, I do go. I don't go as often as I want to, because I'm on a fixed income. See, everybody talking about people going to get addicted to this. You got people addicted to methadone, but that ain't stopped the city of Portsmouth from building them a clinic. So all I'm saying is, listen to the people, because, believe me, I can guarantee you, they're not here. I wish they were. But for those that would like to have a casino here in Portsmouth, I'd like to see them stand up. That's just a handful. That's just a handful of people. We need this money to come in, because I haven't heard anybody tell me they want to go to Willett Hall either. And I like to make sure the citizens know, and this council know, that historic downtown is not Portsmouth. Every time I look at TV or look at the internet, I see historic downtown. Well, Portsmouth got Churchland, Truxton, Cavill, and Manna. They got a whole lot of other places. So if you want to show off Portsmouth, show it all. Have a blessed and a very Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Ms. Simmons?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Johnson?
Ms. Johnson, I'm going to steal a quote from Mayor Wright tonight. Well done.
Yes, 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 you told it all.
Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, this is a public hearing to obtain public comment on the, excuse me, advisability of legalizing casino gaming in the Hampton Roads region, specifically Portsmouth. At this time, if there is anyone in the audience that would like to speak but did not have an opportunity to register, please come forward, give your name and address, and you will have up to five minutes to speak on this specific public hearing.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council Members, City Manager, City Attorney, Ms. White. My name is Cecilia Kelly, 720 Broad Street. I went to Nantello's to pay my cellphone bill the other day, and I discovered that they're not a corporate site anymore, that I would have to pay almost a $4 fee extra to be able to pay my bill there because they're a satellite location. I was in a really good mood, so I called corporate and I let them know. And anybody who has heard me rattle about how caught up in my rattling about how passionate I am about Portsmouth, who has heard me say over and over how much I love it and will lay down and fight for it, and the fights that I've had to fight for Portsmouth and my block and the people that I know and love, they told me that Portsmouth wasn't worthy of a corporate location, that they get a satellite location now. And whatever it takes to put Portsmouth on the map again and to get some respect, and we all put our foot down, I won't pay that $3, $4. And I told them, as soon as my contract's up, I'm away from Nantello's. And with caution and reserve, I support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Yes, sir.
Yes, my name is Marlon Clayton Senior. I live at 3401 Wilshire Road here in Portsmouth, Virginia. I'm a citizen of Portsmouth. I pay taxes for Portsmouth. I also work in the city of Portsmouth. My children attend school in Portsmouth. I care a great deal about my city. I don't have an, I don't have an offering for or against at this time. I have not adequately researched the topic, but as a citizen, I do have a couple of questions I'd like to address or hasn't been thought about. Senator Lucas, she, she said several times about language in the bill. Something that I did not hear that I would like to hear is if, if this is voted upon for, I didn't hear anything about language saying that there would be, say, a mandatory percentage of Portsmouth citizens being employed. Because employment is open, it's here in Portsmouth, if the language can be written, then it should, something should say, there has to be a certain amount of Portsmouth citizens to be employed. I didn't hear any, I didn't hear anything about accountability so that, as in language, who has the oversight on these provisions in the bill to make sure what's being said actually happens, and it can't be sent to Lucas. You know, it can't be, it has to be, it has to be local, has to be someone to say, hey, you know what, this is actually in the bill, it's going to happen. I didn't hear any of that, so I heard a lot of pros, and that's great. You know, I mean, if it happens, that's great, the pros, but like I said, there's no, I didn't hear anything about accountability. Who's going to oversee what's being said to make sure that the city, that the citizens of Portsmouth, they don't get riled out of this great opportunity? And I'm not saying great, I'm saying as is, as is being touted, it's, they don't get riled out of this great opportunity. That would be egregious. And I would like to, I would like the council to maybe speak towards that or to hear some of that, to tell the fact.
You done with your comments?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Ms. Simmons?
Yes, sir. And it's a great point. Just from a technical perspective, whatever this council does tonight about this resolution, yea or nay, means absolutely nothing legally. This is a bill that the Senator has already dropped in the Senate of Virginia that will be debated by the Senate and the House in Richmond. So all of these details of, that we are thinking of and talking about, you know, like you bring up employment, excellent point. Senator Lucas is exactly the person we need to share this information with. Senator Lucas, Delegate James, who's in the audience, Delegate Joanna, the people who represent us. That's exactly who we need to talk about this with. This is not the city doing anything. This is this, our state and House and Senate representatives looking at legislation that would, the Commonwealth of Virginia would change that would allow us to do this. So we absolutely, you see us all sitting here taking notes? It's all about talking to them, as should everybody in this room and everybody watching on TV. They represent all of us, and this is a state law, not a city law. So that's a great point.
So then in that case, I'm at the right forum then?
You're, you're doing great.
Yes.
All right. Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
Yes.
How you doing, council members? Mr. Mayor, my name is Christopher Woodard, and my address is 817 Henry Street. I came down here today to talk to you guys, I'm very familiar with most of you on the panel, Danny Meeks, Mayor Wright, control, you know, most of your accounts in my job. And like I said, I'm familiar with some of the people that came up. And I heard they was talking about business, I mean, where I used to work for some of the people that came up. And Mr. Charles at the mansion. When I, the reason I came down here today, like I said, I was at home sorry for the way I'm dressed, was I seen it on the news. Oh, and I'm sorry, Principal Randall, he was, he was my principal back in the day. You did well. Like I say, I'm a communications and broadcasting graduate from Norfolk State. And what people don't understand is, like the young lady that came up and spoke about downtown High Street is not all of Portsmouth. I do a lot of promotions and marketing for different events that come to this area, and unfortunately, I don't do anything here at Portsmouth. I always have to go to the beach and attract people there. I always have to go to Norfolk and attract people to Grammy Street, but I don't do much here. There, there, we have venues, we have Nantello's, we have a Willet Hall, but we don't have a lineup for the year. So there's no reason to really come here. I most recently did some work in Vegas, and for someone who does marketing and does communications, it was just like a big playground. I say, hey, man, you know, we in the middle of the desert right now, but all these people out here, and they're having fun, they're shopping, you know, they're going to restaurants. So I see people come up, I mean, I heard people come up here with the statistic that the local restaurants won't do well. Well, guess what? Mr. Charles here has a great following, and people don't come to the area and say, hey, we're going to look at his brochure and we're going to the restaurant, the casino. No, they ask people, where's the great food at? Who has the great rapport here in the city? And that's how, that's how people, businesses still thrive, but the people has to be here first. No one's here. High Street is dead. The toll, if the toll comes, nobody's coming over here. Right? No, no one's coming over here. So, I, like I say, I stand before you guys today to let you know that if no one's here, if that casino don't come here, because, you know, let me tell you just a little story. I took my mom and my dad, I took them to Dover. I didn't know anything about casino in Dover. I don't gamble per se, you know. I just went up there, I took my mom up there with me. I didn't even have a lot of money, but I gave them some money, you know, and I went to the, you know, the table and I did my thing, and I was like, ah, well, you know, I'm ready to go. Won a thousand dollars, said I'm ready to go. So I came back around the corner to see my mom, I wanted to know was they going to be bored or sit in some way. I didn't give them a lot of money, but guess what? That's the first time I seen my mom and them smile. Smile! They had some rough times now. My dad, he used to work at the Ford plant for 30 years, had some rough times. I'm basically taking care of, but I seen them smile. And you know what they did to me? That took, they made it seem like that was Christmas. Because they had something to do, they had something to occupy their time. And it wasn't no gambling problem, it's no, it's no, oh, you know, their mortgage is, is, is gonna, you know, fold or whatnot. No, they had a good time. And I would like to see that, that smile on my mom and dad's face once again. Thank you, council.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. You too, bless us, child.
How you doing, Pastor?
Well, and you?
Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Wright, Vice Mayor Cherry and distinguished city council members, public servants, fellow public servants, all. I am honored to stand before you to talk to you about this. First of all, I live in Chesapeake, I do need to clarify. I live in the Western Branch area of Chesapeake, but I grew up mostly in Portsmouth. In fact, most of the, most of my childhood was spent on Douglas Avenue, 309 Douglas Avenue, in Port Norfolk. And I, I've been schooled here, private school here. I've spent virtually all of my ministerial life here.
Pastor, give us your name for the record.
Charles Fuller. Sorry about that. And as such, in fact, we are, we are within three weeks planting living hope in, in Portsmouth with the hope of alleviating some of the pain that we see here in Portsmouth, some of the need that is so prevalent. Some of you I know and, and, and some, some of you I don't, that's true. But I'm hoping that each of you, as fellow public servants, will think about this. Some of you are people of faith. Now, I know we are not supposed to mix politics and religion, sometimes some people say that, but before it's a, before it's a political issue, it's a moral issue. The thing is, those of us who are people of faith believe that all that we have is given to us by God, whether it's the breath in our body, whether it's the strength in our hands, whether it's the gifts and talents with which we earn and bless others. We all have a stewardship. You as public servants, leaders, have a, have a stewardship for the city, over the city. What happens to this city under your watch is on you. This is, this is something that we all share. This is something that we need to take into account. We've heard it said, I've heard it said on the news, that up to 90% of, of the money would go towards mitigating the tolls. And I have the, the text of the bill, I, I downloaded it from the legislative information system last night. I didn't see anything in here about 10% coming back to the city at all. I don't see that. I do see nearly 10% going to pay for the commission that will oversee gambling. I see that 20% of the adjusted receipts, meaning after the casino pays for its, its losses, which of course we know, you know, that doesn't happen too much, but obviously some of that, some of these numbers that we've heard about are inflated. The fact is that we could be talking about maybe 16%. Now, this is all fine and good, and sure, that would be wonderful, but this is really not new. Let's think about this. This is not the first run at casinos in Virginia. The tolls make a nice, a nice reason to think about doing it, but really, it's, it's naive at best to think that this is in an effort to offset the tolls, to mitigate the tolls. This is nothing new. It is deceptive at worst. Now, there, there's a song that, that we sing, I love, it's a hymn, and I'm just going to finish with this. It's a hymn that we sing oftentimes at home goings or funerals, if you prefer. It says, "May the work I've done speak for me. May the work I've done speak for me. When I'm resting in my grave and there's nothing more to be said, may the work I've done speak for me." You're right, City Councilwoman Simmons, this vote that you'll take tonight probably doesn't mean much. This may or may not pass. Most likely, frankly, I don't think it will. But what you do counts. It does matter. And we will remember.
Thank you.
God bless you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. And just, just for the record, because I heard a couple of comments, there will not be a vote tonight. This is just a public hearing, and we will follow up in January. So there will be no action tonight, but thank you for those comments. And it does say the government will be upon his shoulders, and I firm believe that. Thank you, Pastor. Yes, ma'am. Oh, Ms. Simmons?
Thank you, Mayor. If you'll indulge me, just, Mr. Fuller, you can sit down. I just, a couple of people have alluded to what the bill says, and I just want to read a couple of sentences.
Sure.
Because there's no up to, everybody's throwing numbers around. I would just want to read two paragraphs. And this is page 23 of a 25-page piece of legislation, Article 7 under Taxation and Audit, Section 59.1-577, wagering tax rate and distribution. A, at the tax rate of 20% is imposed on the adjusted gross receipts of each licensed operator received from games authorized under this chapter. The taxes shall be paid by the licensed operator to the commission no later than the close of business, blah, 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 blah. Number one, 90%, not up to, 90% shall be paid to the toll mitigation fund established under Section 33.12232.30. 10% shall be paid to the state local casino gaming proceeds fund established pursuant to Section 59.1-580, which is for the city. So that's the wagering tax. Then under the next section is an admissions tax of $2 per person. Again, from that $2 per head tax, 90%, not up to, 90% shall be paid to the toll mitigation fund established under Section blah, blah, and 10% shall be paid to the local casino gaming proceeds fund established pursuant to Section X. There's a, so there's no up to, it's 90 and 10, and 90 and 10, very clear. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Ann Ianson, and I live on Sycamore and have lived in Portsmouth for 20 years. And my husband has tried to give his life's blood to Portsmouth, as his father did. This is really difficult because people have stars in their eyes and they see money. And people see Virginia Beach getting ahead maybe because they might have a casino. Well, my mother told me that if my friends jumped off the Empire State Building, would I jump off too? I just cannot see that it will provide for us the same kind of good character, white and black, that I have seen here for 20 years. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mayor Wright, Vice Mayor Cherry, members of council. My name is Christina Carlton, and I live at 88 Elwin Road in Craddock. So this is one of the very few times I ever come up here unscripted. Unfortunately, I have not read the 25-page presentation. I am not for and I am not against. I am neither of those yet. And I have a big feeling I am not the majority of those folks either. I have a big feeling that a lot of the members in your audience, those watching tonight, are also on that midline. I look at casinos as, sure, what you see in the movies, or if you're driving across country, you've got these grand casinos way out in the boondocks that don't have a major city around it, you actually have to drive out to it. I see that these casinos could bring wonderful jobs, especially when in these economic times, when you have government shutdown, and what could residents be forced to move towards? At the same time, on the negative side, do they take that same stance of that downward slide into a gambling habit? If you want to talk about location, I've heard that, that grand empty space beside the, the farm fresh over there on McLean, between McLean and Portsmouth Boulevard, is, I guess, a proposed area for that. If indeed that is one of the proposed places, I don't, I have to say that's one of my nays. Because if you see TCC, because somebody mentioned that it would be close to the campus, TCC and Virginia Beach and Chesapeake's constantly building. So would we not allow TCC to keep building over into that area as well? Do we have to rely on an outside entity to come into Portsmouth to create and generate what could be sustainable for the city of Portsmouth? I am not a grand scheme thinker, I am not a mathematician, so I don't know numbers, I cannot give you the grand plan. However, I've, I've got to think that there's something within the city, within the residents of the city that we can do for ourselves. There has to be. And sure, with the tolls, I'm, I'm, I can definitely look on the nay for that because being a military member, I- being a military member, I hate to say it, but I'm gonna be forced to stay here for another three years, because there's gonna be no way I'm gonna be able to sell my house with somebody, an individual, who is going to buy in Portsmouth, yet their job may be in Virginia Beach, their job may be in Chesapeake, Norfolk, Suffolk. And if you've got those who live on the other side of the tunnels, they're not gonna wanna come take these tunnels to their medical services that are at the Portsmouth Naval Hospital. So sure, on the yay side, if these casinos do bring in the money, and we can actually mitigate some of the toll prices, great. If you can lower my tax rate, even better. But I can tell you right now, if you look at the estimates that are going on in our, in our housing district, I'm not selling my house. I would love to say that these casinos are gonna bring the jobs in. I would love to say that. But I know a lot of these bigger entities, they bring in their own people. They have a lot of individuals that they've vetted through other casinos, and they like to see their own members transfer. And somebody even alluded to, yes, you have to have that perfect criminal record. It's, it's a yes and a no. Right now, I'm not sure exactly what side to go to. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Meeks?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question for George. We're not as far, close as other guys. Because she did a pre-filing, she's trying to get a vote where we are, what do we need to do to court, to cast the vote tonight?
I did, I did get that question from this end of the dais. Under section one of the council rules, this meeting tonight qualifies as a special meeting for the purpose of conducting a public hearing on the advisability of the gaming, of supporting the gaming bill, or on the advisability of, of gaming itself. The, one of the provisions under special meeting says that notice of each special meeting shall contain a, a statement of, of the specific item or items of business to be transacted, and no other business shall be transacted at such meeting except by the unanimous consent of all the members of the council. So you would need all seven members to count, to consent to vote tonight, if you wanted to, if you wanted to act on the resolution tonight.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor Wright, Vice Mayor Cherry, rest of the council, and Mr. Rowe and Mr. Wilson. My name is Glenda Cornet. I live in the Park Manor section of Portsmouth. I'm not up here to say I'm for it or I'm against it. All I am up here for is to pose some questions to you all that have been posed to me. One thing is, people have been asking, well, have they done a study? And I'm not talking about a study out of books, out of other cities. Have they done a study for Portsmouth? So that's one question. I know that we don't want to put temptation in front of our youngsters as they're growing up. They have enough temptation already, just watching television, and seeing people drink and do drugs. We don't need any other negative temptations put before them. That's just a little thing I threw in there. But some of the, the other question was, said, how many years, if approved by the General Assembly, would it take to demolish the current buildings on the waterfront, relocate the jail? How long would it take to build a new gambling casino? Will the casino have restaurants or other eateries inside? Just how much revenues will the local restaurants take in, especially if the casino has first-class eateries? Where will the funds come from in the beginning to build a casino? Overall, it will take how long to get a casino up and running, with millions of dollars coming back into Portsmouth? This is nothing that's gonna happen in one year or two years. It's gonna take a long time before we find out and get any millions of dollars coming into the city. These are questions that I think, according to some of my friends, have been quite worthy of being answered. If you don't have the answers to them, then I say, don't jump the gun and approve something that you don't have the answers and the facts about. And Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to all of you.
Thank you, ma'am. Same to you. Yes, sir. We'll get you next. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Sorry for my appearance. I got home like the other fellow said, and I jumped in my chair and turned on the TV, and it says it'll be 20 minutes, I had the meeting, and I thought it was at 7 o'clock. So I just jumped up and come on down. But Mayor, I'm Pepe.
Give me your name first. Your name?
Johnny Owens.
Mr. Owens?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I have two businesses, City of Portsmouth.
Okay, okay.
And first of all, I'd like to say I thank you for your comments you said about my brother Pepe a couple of weeks ago. He's my brother, just passed away. And it's like I always tell people, he's been my brother all my life. I've only been his brother part of his life, but he had very much time on me. But I myself is, I'm against the gaming. First of all, I'm not a, a citizen of this country. My citizenship's up above. I'm just passing through this country. And my father above leads me in what I do. I know tonight, if I'd laid my head down, and I would have passed on, I know where I would spend eternity. Now, we dealing with a situation, we had prayer before the meeting tonight, asking God to bless us. And I just wanna have God can bless us when we're talking about doing something like this. We're sitting here talking about it all evening long. But how's he gonna bless our motives when we wanna get into this type of activity? Our country's already legalized murder. We have legalized adultery. We've legalized homosexuality. We've legalized gambling. We've legalized drinking. And as I read all through the Old Testament, as I read my Bible through every year, this year be twice, I see we're looking at disobedience. That's what's destroyed most of lives in this country, is because of disobedience to God's Word. And we're looking at a situation where we wanna indulge in more sin, and more anti-racialness. You know, our country's crumbling. Our city's crumbling. Our whole world is crumbling, because we are living in the last days. Won't be long, we'll be out of here. And only what we do for God is gonna stand, and stand for eternity. If you have a relationship with God tonight, and you're sitting up there on the council, you gotta ask yourself, you know, am I pleasing God by my decision if I vote for this? You know, baloney on the money. God's promised to provide all our needs with His riches through glory. And here we're looking at something to just earn money so we can prosper. You're not gonna prosper. It's never right to do wrong to be right. That just don't happen. Now, I think this thing just needs to be pushed aside. We want our city to prosper, we're not gonna prosper. Down the road a ways, if this thing fails completely, you know, what are we gonna say to ourselves? Here, we voted on something that's not really pursuant to our, what we should be doing. We need to do things honestly and sincerely. A lot of these numbers come out, that don't mean a hill of beans, a million, I don't care if it was $10 million we'd make on it. I believe in doing what's right. I've invested in a city. I've made a lot of money here over the years, but I did it by doing what's right. Mr. Meeks, you're a businessman. Building your business, I'm sure you've made a lot of money, where they talk. Have you done anything crooked or unrighteous to get your money? But you've been blessed, and you got your money, haven't you?
Yes, sir.
I've done the same thing. And others, for you to have businesses, look back at what you've made and how you did it. Did you do it righteously, or did you do it dishonestly? And how did you end up? Anyway, you know, I want y'all to think about this seriously, and, 'cause what we're doing is not a righteous thing, if we vote yes for this, either tonight or whenever it's done. I wanna wish y'all a very Merry Christmas, a very blessed Christmas. And if you don't have Jesus as your Savior, this is the best time of the year, you can accept Him and put Him in your heart. Because for one thing, you will live forever, and your decisions will be based on His Word, and His Word alone, and not what we think we should be doing, but what we ought to be doing. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Meeks?
My name is Kendrae Al-Davin. Greetings, council. Mr. Meeks, how you doing, Mr. Moody? You gonna stay in that seat tonight? Okay. There are so many honorables in the building tonight. First, let's honor Senator Louise Lucas. She is favorite us tonight, which of course, I don't blame her. How you doing? Hey, Mr. Connie. And this other honorables, and I'm gonna mess up on all the names, but this one, he's a personal friend of mine in my family. So how you doing, Delegate James? Has he left? No, there he is. Hey. Now, I know, you all know, that I am a bloodwashed Jesus Christ, tithed, paying. Give your 10% to Jesus and to the house first. So I'm not gonna speak on the casinos, 'cause you already know where I stand. See that commercial bishop for the church? See that? See I slid that in? But I will say this. I know I don't have the honorable L-L-L initials. I'm not favored to have S-E-N in front of my name. But I saw how Senator Louise Lucas was able to get you all rolling. This bill came so fast before you all, this resolution. I was in the meeting Monday night. I said, man, if they could've voted on that Monday night, that would've been a yes, done deal, move on. What do we have to do to get these schools open for our children? And I figured I would come down here and do it while the honorables are in the house with me. And I know Delegate James loves the babies. I know that. He's always supported the school system. He's always supported the children. You play youth rec, you played in the city. It's Christmas time, and we have to do something. I know the topic is heavy, but every good play, every good show deserves a commercial, something lightweight, some refreshments. Senator Louise, can you tell them to help me? I'm serious.
I'll put a vote.
Okay. Well, you gonna get the vote. They would've voted on that two Mondays ago, seriously. And you would've gotten that yes. I know that much. But we really, the schools are there, and I'm putting my plea before you for the children, because the schools are there. They gonna be fighting about this rec center for a minute. That's fine. But the schools are already there. The school board has said they could use the schools for the youth, and I don't know what the holdup is. But I know you can get to the bottom of this. I know you can do this. And Delegate James, I know you can as well. You know I worry you to death with your text, ma'am. I worry you to death. I call, I'll just tell the truth, because the children don't stand a chance if somebody don't just come and say, I'm desperate for the children. We talk about them. Gamble, I don't care what you, we're the grown folk, do what you gonna do. I, I'm, man, I might need pray on this one. But if I can get some, one, um, what is it? Stop, little bit of stop, you know, just a little something. But anyway, back to the seriousness of the children and the youth. I'm trying to keep it light, because this was a heavy, heavy topic. And seriously, come on, can we do something coming soon for the children? Danny, you don't wanna say nothing? Okay, I'm done.
Thank you, Mayor. This is, this is off-topic, but, but I'm gonna ask it since you brought it up. You know, City Manager's been working with the superintendent about, everybody knows about monies and returning monies, getting money back, put some stipulations in. One of the stipulations was opening up the schools for recreation. If you recall, the school board chairman stood right there where you were standing, said David N. Griton ended the stipulations on, was that last meeting night, I think it was, maybe two meetings ago that he came and spoke. So we're willing to do that. The City Manager has Parks and Recreation standing by, ready to staff the schools when and if they become available.
I was gonna get John to give us an update where we were, but I think Paige has already talked to him. I think we're all in agreements that we do need to, that's our quick fix, is open these schools up, so the kids will have a place to go after school.
Okay, so let me clarify this.
Yep.
You're telling me that staffing and funding for the schools have been approved? Because the schools are saying that it's on this end that the staffing and the fundings have not been situated. Because at this point, the only one standing in the gap are the children. And if we can bring the bridge, let's get this bridge done.
I'm, I'm telling you, I just spoke to our, to our CEO, our City Manager, and he just told me that he's standing by, ready to make that happen, if, with the school, when the school becomes available for recreation, with his Parks and Rec Department.
You heard him?
Ms. Randall?
Yes, I think this is very interesting, and it's more than overdue. The first program that was held in two of our school buildings was started at Lakeview Elementary School. Senator Lucas can witness that, as a result of an initiative of parents' work, and it just will happen, and God bless me, to be the visionary at that time. We had school in the morning for the children. We had afternoon recreations. And the volunteer staff was made up of parents from the PTA. The records speak for themselves, because the children not only did exceptionally well, and the funding did not come, Senator Lucas, I'm pointing right, it, it did not come from the city or from the parents. What the school did was develop a funding means. And we had schools for the children, not only during the day, but we were babysitting them in the afternoon, that's right, to keep the children there at school for a safe environment, until the parents was able to pick them up. And it worked most successfully. Now, some of you may be too young to remember that, 'cause I'm a young lady. And I want you to understand that. But that was where all of the children were writing to come to school, because they knew that was somebody there, and there was a community that embraced them, embraced them. And Mr. Wright remembers that too, because he was out there as a part of that community. But the thing is that it was an initiative of People for the Love, and this needs to be still going through. It should not be any discrepancies in terms of taking care of the needs of our children, regardless to which part of the city that they live in. I, I don't know where this is coming through as a new idea, because it's not a new idea. It has been there, and the children did well. Look at the records. The test results were high, the reading scores were high, and they were participating and winning in most of your city council projects or anything that went on. So I think it's a matter of working back with the PTA council. At that time, it was very busy. And they got together, and they came up with the agenda of what they wanted in the schools. And they were able to get it. We had the top schools, and they're in Portsmouth. So what we are talking about is re-bringing back and revitalizing those activities that worked, and people being involved and saying, I love my community. And that's what we need to do. So we need to just put that program back in place, and not feel as if we are being beat up, because we are not getting it done. But the fact is, it is happening. And if you have not gotten that information, I would be happy to pull it together, because we do have it, and the stats are there within our school divisions. Our problem is, we have more parents who are working later, and a lot of times, we don't have the funding to pay parents for the overtime, or the teachers for their overtime for being there with them. But this is something that has been in place, and we just need to put it back in place, because the children are doing well in schools. Our stats prove that. So I wanted you to get those facts, and if you need additional stats, we, I can pull it together for you, because I worked very closely, read it. Okay? Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Mayor, my, my comments were, were not for the speaker. I want to speak to council in general, once she, once she, once she sat down. So if I can, if I can come back and speak when she, if anyone's, whatever.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Devon, and please, you don't have to come back to the podium. But what you're asking for is actually contained in one of the recommendations in But what you're asking for is actually contained in one of the recommendations in our recreation study. And Counsel directed, probably a month ago, directed the manager to get back with Counsel with a plan on implementing some of those recommendations. And that was one of the recommendations that I think this Counsel is in total agreement with. And I think the manager reported back just a few weeks ago that he would be reporting back with us, I believe in January, February. Is that correct?
That's right.
Mr. Manager?
That's correct, with the budget.
Okay, good.
With the proposed budget.
But thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you, Mr. Moody.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're still in a public hearing to obtain comment on the advisability of legalizing casino, casino gaming in the Hampton Roads region, specifically Portsmouth. And at this time, if there's anyone present that would like to speak but did not have an opportunity, please come forward, give your name and address, and you will have up to five minutes to speak.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Honorable Members of Counsel, and fellow citizens. My name is Mark Gadolda Getrowski, P.O. Box 50141, Portsmouth, Virginia. My biggest fear tonight was that you'd throw a party and nobody would come. I applaud my fellow citizens who have been here ahead of me to express their views. Many of them have been thought-provoking, um, and all of them, I think, were, were provided with the best interests of the city at heart. And so, I'm happy to hear the commentary that's taken place in this room. I want to say that I cannot agree with the proposal to bring casino gambling to Virginia. And I want to take issue with some things that have been asserted. To quote the Cordish Company, which on its website identifies itself as one of the biggest operators, or one of, one of its major forms of business is operating gambling casinos. To use their statistics as unbiased, um, views, I think, would be like taking the tobacco companies' assertions that smoking really isn't that harmful at face value. I think there is a difference as well between commercial casinos and casinos run by Native American tribes. Commercial casinos, according to statistics available on the internet, are allowed in 20 states in this country. The other 19 states that allow casinos, many of them do it reluctantly, but because of the special status of Native American tribes in this country as essentially nations in and of themselves, they're unable to shut them down. So, Virginia right now is in the majority of the states that do not allow casino gambling. But I think the most cogent points on this issue were made by your own colleague, Council Member Edmonds. And Reverend Kelly, and Reverend Fuller, regarding the moral hazard of this undertaking. Now, I want to say that if everybody who gambled were in the same club as Bill Gates and Warren Buffett, the fact that they would choose to tax themselves so that the rest of us could benefit, I'd have no heartburn over that. But the statistics that I have seen consistently show that it's the people at the other end of the economic spectrum. So, we are essentially taking from the poor and giving to the rich. And, you know, I'm a fan of Robin Hood. I like it to work the other way. The rich are well off, and the funny thing is, they don't make their money at the casinos. Warren Buffett didn't make his. John D. Rockefeller didn't make his. Bill Gates didn't make his. They did it through carrying forward the, the basic elements, the basic foundation of this country. The Protestant work ethic. You roll up your sleeves, you do the heavy lifting, you do the hard work, and if you have a little bit of luck along the way, you prosper. Some people prosper a great deal. I do not want to send the message to our young people that life is a lottery, that individual effort, that getting a good foundation, be it an academic education or a grounding in a trade, is the way to move forward. So, I am dead-set against this.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
That's Bruce. That's my boyfriend.
Good evening, Mayor. Vice Mayor Cherry, and also Bishop Evans. I just want to say thank you for your services, fellow veteran. My name is, and Councilman, thank you very much, or Councilwoman, for having me here. My name is Bruce LaLonde. I live in the Green Lake section of Portsmouth, Virginia. And it's just unusual of what I want to speak about. And while I, I'm still considering whether I'm for or against gambling, I'm a mentor. I've been a mentor in the Big Brother, Big Sister program for about seven years with three Portsmouth young men who go to Portsmouth Public Schools. And over those seven years, I've worked hard to help them with their character and to let them know that you should try and work hard here in Portsmouth. Good grades in Portsmouth. Your job is to be a good student, and that's your job right now. But I want to make sure that there's a place for them when they do graduate. I don't know if the gaming industry is a place that I think is gonna be a solution for them. But I don't want them just to have a job in Portsmouth. I want them to have a career in Portsmouth. One of the young men wants to be a chef, wants to be a good cook. There's places to do that in a casino. Another one wants to go into security. He wants to go into IT-type of work. That kind of stuff is available with casinos. The other one wants to be an event planner, all right? That kind of work can be done in casinos. So, I want to look not only at the, at what the revenue's gonna do, but what it does for the jobs here in Portsmouth. We talked, we talked about a 7.7% unemployment rate here in Portsmouth. It needs to be solved, it needs to be solved now. This casino is gonna take a long time to think about. And these boys that I work with are gonna have a couple of years before they graduate. We've gotta have a path for them. There's a few of y'all who've on the council now and on the council, have been on the, worked with the Portsmouth Public Schools and the Portsmouth School Foundation. We've worked hard to put technical programs in place in the city of Portsmouth. Culinary programs, hotel management programs, horticultural programs. Well, where do they go after they graduate if we want to keep them here in Portsmouth? I'm not gonna say the casino is a perfect solution, and it's not. But it's a solution to a problem that I'm concerned about, which is jobs in the city of Portsmouth. I have a present job that I work with homeless folks who need jobs, all right? And this is an avenue. Not only do I think the casino will bring jobs, but, but the ancillary business, the tourists that'll come in will bring other jobs to them. But I want you to think from that aspect. Is this the right solution? Something we're gonna debate. Is it something that we want to put aside right now? No. We need to address what you're gonna do and where you're on the dais for the future of those three young men, and that's why I'm here, for their, their future. I'm in the fall of my career right now, and they deserve a shot. And we can't continue to do business economically the way you've done it in the past without looking at what the strategic vision's gonna be. And this may be, it's, it's at the forefront. It is at the cutting edge. It's time for us to take a step out and say, "This is what we're going to do." Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Randall?
Yes, Mr. LaLonde, before you leave, you have always been a pioneer out here with the work that you've done in this city. And I think a lot of times, people don't recognize all the wonderful things that you've done for the young people. I've happened to talk with many of your proteges that you have pulled up from the boot strings, and they are making it because of your love and dedication, and most of all, your commitment and financial backing to ensure that not only the parents were able to make it, but their children are able to make it. And I commend you, because you never say anything about all the beautiful things that you've done. But I've known you so many years, I think the public needs to know, you are truly an entrepreneur who not only speaks from your heart, but you go out there financially and make things happen for many of these young children who are handicapped in our cities. And there are parents who are senior, who need guidance and a source of hope. And I want to take this opportunity to say to you, I commend you.
Thanks, your Councilman.
And your family for all that you've done for the many children that I know of, and I'm a young woman. So, I, I want you to know, a lot of times, people don't take time to say, "Thank you for the good things that you've done." And you've helped a load, a whole lot of young people that I know of.
Thank you.
God bless you, and have a blessed day.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Good night. Well done.
Honorable Mayor Wright, Vice Mayor Cherry, Honorable, um, City Council members, City Managers, City Attorney, Sergeant Adams, Deborah White and her staff. Good evening. My name is Joseph R. Wright, 1451 Welcome Road, City of Portsmouth. I was not planning on speaking tonight. I was, when I came to this meeting, I mainly came as a, as an observer. But I heard something, that there would be no vote taken tonight. Now, I realize this vote, whether it's taken tonight or next month, is largely symbolic. But I, I wish we wouldn't try to emulate the people in Washington, DC. You know, vote it up or down, you know? That's what these people came here for tonight, to vote it up or down.
Very well.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wright. Uh, Mr. Cherry?
Yes, Ms. Mayor, thank you. I was gonna just say to Mr. Wright, my intentions were, who wants this public hearing to close, to ask my colleagues if they would agree to vote on this tonight. Because Senator Lucas came in tonight, um, the general assembly starts on January the 9th. Our next meeting will be January the 12th. And I think most of us had intention on voting on this tonight. So, if we could just vote this up or down tonight, and it's not gonna change to my colleagues, whether we vote it up, whether you vote yes or no tonight, it's not gonna change the, the outcome. I don't think it's gonna change anybody's votes if we wait, if we wait a couple of weeks to vote on it. We all, probably nobody's gonna change. And as, and as my colleague, Ms. Simmons says, this doesn't do anything legally. It, it doesn't guarantee a casino comes to Portsmouth. But what it does say is that we, as a Portsmouth City Council, support what the senator's trying to do to bring the casino to Portsmouth. So, at the proper time, Mayor, I'm gonna, I wanna ask that, that we do that tonight.
Okay. Uh, Dr. Edmonds?
Yeah, I think we ought to give our senator that right to leave here knowing where we're going to. She'd make that time to come. She's been ill, and I think we need to give her that consideration.
Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Mayor. To Mr. Wright's point, you're absolutely correct. Uh, our council rules do allow us to do that tonight. It has to be a majority of us. If the majority says, "Let's consider it tonight," then it can be considered.
Yes, Mayor.
Mayor Wright and Council members, my name is Linda Kaufman, and I have residence at 111 High Street. I only have two questions. I'll be brief. Is this issue important enough to have an impact study by a neutral organization as opposed to casino groups like the Cordish Company? And number two, if you were to vote yes on having a casino in Portsmouth, would you, any of you, be willing to have it located next to your home? That's all I have.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Simmons? Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Kaufman, I can answer your two questions. Number one, the city did not commence a study, but the Hampton Roads Transportation Planning Organization did. And if you'll turn around, Senator Lucas has it in her hand. It's what she was holding a little earlier, which is a regional organization, nothing to do with the city, not from the city. And as far as living next door to the casino, I live in Admiral's Landing, and so, I do support it, and I think it'd make a marvelous neighbor.
Members of City Council, seeing no additional persons to come forward for this public hearing, this public hearing is now closed.
Um, Mr., let's see, I see Cherry, Simmons, and Meeks. Uh, Mr. Cherry first.
Mr. Mayor, I was gonna make a motion to add item to the agenda.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second to add an item to the agenda, and you will be voting electronically.
What is the item?
What is it?
The resolution.
What is, what is the item that we're adding?
The item is a resolution by City Council of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, in support of Senator L. Louise Lucas's Senate Bill 19, presented to the 2014 General Assembly.
Does this brings it up for?
So, this just brings it to the agenda, so you all can vote on it.
Okay. I didn't mean, I pushed the wrong button. That's okay.
Ms. Simmons?
I just pushed the wrong button.
Have we closed it out? We've already closed it out. Council members, we're gonna have you to vote again, please.
Thank you.
This item is adopted 6-1. George, is that sufficient to move it forward?
That is not sufficient to move it forward tonight. There are other provisions of the rules that with 24 hours' notice, you can call a special meeting and vote on it later on this week. If you wish, if you wish to vote before the regular council meeting in January.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that Council, uh, hold a special meeting of this council tomorrow at 6:00 PM, if that will work. Madam Clerk?
It's gotta be 20.
Will that work?
George, could we do 6:00?
8:30 tomorrow night.
8:30 tomorrow night.
8:30 tomorrow night.
If you can, you bring the pons in.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilman Moody to add a special meeting to your agenda for tomorrow evening at 8:30 PM, and we're in need of a second if necessary.
Second.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you will be voting electronically.
Dr. Edmonds, you wanna speak?
8:30 is not a good time.
It has to be 24 hours.
I know, 6:00. What can we do it at 9:00?
Tomorrow night.
Madam Clerk?
Hold it, Ms. Moody. You're on the floor.
9:00 would be great for me, 'cause I like to be here. 9:00 would work well with me.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Moody, you made a motion.
I would like to change my motion, Mayor. I, I think that time of the evening's not friendly to the public or to some members of this council in deference, uh, to, to some folks here. I would say that we move it to 6:00 on Thursday.
Clear the votes.
Second.
Thursday at 6:00. Mayor, we have a motion and a second to hold a special meeting on Thursday, December the 19th.
We have another meeting.
Okay. Mr. Meeks?
Mayor, I understand you want to stand your ground, but I think we owe it to the public to at least be on one accord with having to vote tonight. I wish you would reconsider.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor and a second. Are we voting?
Yes, sir. You're voting electronically.
Okay. We're voting electronically.
To do it win tomorrow night.
This is for Thursday at?
Thursday at 6:00 was the motion Ms. Moody made and second.
I'm not gonna be making. I'm not gonna be able to make it.
Can I ask a question of the City Attorney a moment? Mr. Wilson, for clarification, I know normally three members of City Council can request a special meeting. Does this require a vote?
Does not request a vote. If you've got three members who want to call a meeting for Thursday at 6:00, you have a meeting Thursday at 6:00. There's no vote required.
Okay.
So, we will cancel this?
Thursday at 6:00.
Well, before we, I was gonna say, can we poll you tomorrow?
I think so.
Okay. Is everyone available before meeting?
Thursday's in. Thursday's at 6:00. Oh, I'm sorry.
I have another meeting.
He says he's not, and neither is Ms. Randall.
That's why 9:00 has got to be, is 9:00 or? 9:00 tomorrow? You had to make another motion.
We don't need a motion if three of us agree on it.
All right, so what?
Three is 9:00 majority vote.
9:00?
9:00?
9:00 tomorrow?
Mayor, I have to say, I really wish you reconsidered.
Ladies and gentlemen, Council is deliberating. We ask if you could just give us a moment, please.
Is there a motion on the floor, Mr. Moody?
No, sir, there is no motion right now.
We don't need a motion, according to our Council rules.
There is no requirement for a motion on this.
So, do we have three members in favor of meeting? When do you want to meet, Mr. Moody?
9:00 Wednesday to accommodate the members who are gonna be out of town.
Are there three members there for 9:00? Okay, we'll meet three, Wednesday at 9:00?
But I think there was some other...
Yeah, it's somebody else that wanted to speak.
Okay. Ms. Simmons? You're done? Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you.